And gentlemen, the regular session of the 17th Sangguniang Panaluwigan.
This regular session of the 17th Sangguniang Panaluwigan is hereby called order. Please stand for the prayer to be led by Honorable Cesar Baricuatro, to be followed by the singing of the national anthem and the Suk Buhim.
Yes, Lord, our saints and great saints of the Lord. Heavenly Father, leading holy Father, Son. Heavenly Father, ever merciful, precious, our A and S. As we embark once again in our weekly task, guide us in our discussion that this will be enlightening and productive. Raise our debates, the debates that it will generate more lights than here. It that it will spar, spawn instead of destroying bridges of woodwork and understanding and summon all positive forces that give life into our effort to make our governance worthy demanded with fullness in us. Increase in us the awareness, Lord, in order that we may bring your blessing to our people more promptly through the legislation we have today. All this we ask in Jesus' name and.
Sa unosok kasakit, sa kagutomuk kalisod. Maghiusata sa gugma paglaungdili maunda. Magkupot sa kamot, Diyos magdalakadon. Paglaung sa katawan mo tingdo. Awit sa pagsalibu kalinaw. Bisan pa sa kangitngitupat sulay. Adlaw nga mosidlak magdanan. Kung ang lungsod mapuno sa luha, tungod sa sayop sa dagkong gahon. Magbarok tao bansa kamaturan. Gugmama oy ligon nga haligi. Paglaung sa katawan mo tingdo. Awit sa pagsalibu kalinaw. Bisan pa sa kangitngitupat sulay. Adlaw nga mosidlak magdanan. Paglaung sa katawan mo tingdo. Awit sa pagsalibu kalinaw. Bisan pa sa kangitngitupat sulay. Adlaw nga mosidlak magdanan. Arunahan sa halubu pa'utulukka lunay na laray. Sukbu tulupi nyaran sa histuanu kinuan. Dipanay dipanay deryayin talagumay seyo san suvinyo. Matasaysayanoy mabiyari mo. Madamimun amaykabayo ng ipasigabon. Sukbu pinanla sa klima upananun. Kalinaw ka'uswadan palunharun pananun. Bisan na samnawa sa hupapalingkano. Ika'alu kanunay mahadunun.
Can this secretary please call the room?
Vice Governor Glenn Anthony Osoco.
Present.
Honorable Jason Lawrence A. Lagun.
Present.
Honorable Andre DoTerte.
Present.
Honorable Gary King Chimura. Honorable Antonio D. Bacalcos Jr. Honorable Lacambine G. Reluia.
Present.
Honorable Raymond Joseph D. Calderon.
Present.
Honorable Stanley S. Caminero.
Present.
Honorable Julius Anthony G. Corominas. Honorable Jason Lawrence A. Lagun. Honorable Nelson J. Mondigo.
Present.
Honorable Michael Joseph T. Villamor.
Present.
Honorable Alfred Francis M. O'Ano.
Present.
Honorable Sazara A. Baricuatro. Honorable Paz A. Rosgony.
Present.
Honorable Malcolm A. Sanchez.
Present.
Honorable Nilo Viseno.
Present.
Honorable Ricardo D. Pipito. Honorable Celestino A. Martinez III. Honorable Loren S. Cinco.
Present.
Mister Chair, there are eighteen members present including the Vice Governor.
Eight members present including the Vice Governor, the Chair hereby declares accord.
The Chair recognizes the floor leader, the Honorable Red DoTerte.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, before we begin, I would like to move for the reconsideration of our action taken for item number eight of our agenda from the previous regular session last October 6, 2025. The said item was erroneously referred to the Committee on Public Health and Social Services when the proper action should have been referred to the Committee on Budget and Appropriations. I move to reconsider, Mister Chair.
So motion for reconsideration in relation to item number eight in the previous session.
Second.
Second on the motion. Any objections? The Chair hears none, then the motion is carried. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, before we begin with our business for the day, I would like to call on Honorable Cesar Baricuatro of the Seventh District for his privileged speech.
The Honorable Cesar Baricuatro of the Seventh District of the Province of Cebu is hereby recognized to deliver his privileged speech.
Ikusana ito sasabihin eh, kaya lang tatlong araw ko't pinagkaralanan. Anyway. Mister Presiding Officer. The Honorable Majority Floor Leader. My esteemed colleagues in this august body, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Thank you for granting me the privilege to rise on matter of personal and collective importance. In the past several days, our beloved province of Cebu was once again tested by the forces of nature. This 6.9 magnitude earthquake that struck our province shook not only our lands and homes, but also our heart. Yet amid the face of uncertainty, one throat stood firm. Cebu remained steadfast, moving swiftly, efficiently, and with unity of purpose. That being said, it is important to note that our relief and recovery effort are far from over. They are continuing and evolving. Rebuilding takes time, but it also brings within with it the opportunity to rise stronger and be better prepared. Personal and local government units, partners, and volunteers continue to work hard hand in hand to deliver assistance, restore livelihood, and rebuild communities. With coordination and cooperation, we will not only recover from this disaster, but also emerge as a province that is more resilient, more compassionate, and more equipped for the challenges ahead. As confirmed by Rosco Del General Maranan, Regional Director of Police, Regional Office Seven said and I quote. I would like to put my hats off to the Governor of the Province, Governor Pamela Baricuatro, for orchestrating a very effective, very responsive, and very efficient disaster response. Mister Presiding Officer. I and my fellow board members, these words reflects what we have also witnessed firsthand. From the first hour following the earthquake, the various departments of the Capitol were immediately mobilized. Screw traps, ambulances, and the vehicles were deployed without delay. And even the aftershock continued. The Governor herself stood alongside the local government, the LGO officials, and responders, offering not just direction, but encouragement and hope. Sitting Officer, I rise to commend the provincial government of Cebu, led by our Governor Honorable Pamela S. Baricuatro, for his exemplary leadership for bringing present and proactive in the midst of crisis when our people need it the most. I also commend our Vice Governor, Honorable Glenn Soko, and my colleagues in the Sangguniang Panaluwigan for their solidarity and active involvement in extending aid to our affected constituents in the north. In the aftermath of the tragedy, while many worked tirelessly to help to heal these unfortunate moments of misinformation, disunity, and distrust, particularly in social media. Some parts, some posts have total confusion and division at a time when we need most compassion. We must remember that in times like this, emotion runs high. Our people are grieving, grieving, anxious, and afraid, and undisturbedly. So, we're all affected, some more deeply than others. That is why now more than ever, we must choose understanding, communication, and cooperation. Make this be a call for unity, organization, and patience. There has work hand in hand with our provincial government, our local officials, our ununiformed personnel, the private sector, and our volunteers. Every effort, every effort, every direction, and acts of kindness, no matter how small when done together. Sure, it seems to lead with calm, compassion, and courage. It is now our duty to, as elected officials and members of this Sangguniang Panaluwigan and as Cebuanos. The same leadership with our own sense of responsibility. An instrument of peace, unity, and cooperation. Because at the end of the day, regardless of our political affiliation, our personal belief, we are all Cebuanos. And the strength of Cebu has always been built. Not one word of division, but an act of solidarity. Our responders, private donors, frontliners, public officials, and our people, thank you very much. To my servants, it has continued to show our constituent that we can sit aside differences and unite as one. And to our fellow Cebuanos, especially those from the towns and cities affected by the recent earthquake, I say this: You are not alone. You have a provincial government that leads with Honorable Pamela Baricuatro and stand with you, that stand with you, ready to unite and lead us toward a stronger, more resilient Cebu, ready to face any challenges ahead. Before I finish, I would like to ask my colleague. Kaunting pangunawa lang naman sa akin. Alam ko, wala ako doon nung kayo nagdi-distribute ng mga relieved goods. I'm sorry for that, but you are in my prayers all the time. You know already why. You can look at me. Siguro hindi ko nakailangan iexplica pa. Mister Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, thank you very much.
One minute, please sir. Session is resumed. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, may I now move that the reading of the minutes of our previous session held last October 6, 2025 be dispensed with and at the same time be approved?
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session and the same be approved?
Second. Second.
If it is seconded, are there any objections? If they're being none, then the motion is carried. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, before we proceed with our calendar of business for the day, I would like to introduce the following amendments as other matters. As item number fifty, a proposed resolution authored by yours truly and Honorable Stanley Esquinero entitled "Autorizing Honorable Pamela S. Baricuatro, Cebu Provincial Governor to Give Financial Assistance For and on Behalf of the Province of Cebu, the Amount of 5 Million Pesos to the Province of Dava Oriental to Aid in Their Current Disaster Response and Rehabilitation Efforts in Light of the Recent 7.5 Magnitude Earthquake That Struck the Said Province." As item number fifty-one, a proposed resolution authored by Honorable Michael Joseph T. Villamor entitled "Congratulating and Commending Dandin Lago Bernabe Who Hails from Barangay Nangka of the Municipality of Consolación and is a graduate of the University of San Jose Recoletos who garnered a 90% rating in the recently concluded September 2025 Psychometrician Licenseure Examination and for being Cebu's first ever top one in the said exam. As item number fifty-two, a resolution authored again by Honorable Michael Joseph T. Villamor entitled "Commending the University of San Jose Recoletos for his exemplary contribution to academic excellence in the field of psychology as evidenced by the outstanding performance of which graduate to top the recently concluded 2025 Psychometrician Licenseure Examination and recognizing the institution's role in bringing honor to the Province of Cebu. As item number fifty-three, a resolution authored by Honorable Nilo Viseno entitled[1535.60][1535.88]"A Resolution Thanking Mayor Frederick Xiao for His Generous Donation." As item number fifty-four, a resolution authored by Honorable Malcolm A. Sanchez, a resolution expressing the profound gratitude of the Province of Cebu to the Office of the Special Assistant to the President, Honorable Antonio F. Legdameyo Jr., for the donation of tents, water, and canned goods to the victims of the recent 6.9 magnitude earthquake in the Province of Cebu. Finally, Mister Chair, as item number fifty-five, a proposed resolution authored by yours truly and Dr. Stanley Caminero of the Second District entitled "A Resolution Authorizing Pamela S. Baricuatro, Governor, Province of Cebu to Provide Cash Assistance and Aid Amounting to 10,000 Pesos Each to All Employees of the Cebu Provincial Government Working in Four Province's Own Hospitals, namely the Huuan Dosado Memorial Hospital in Sugod, the AdBantayan District Hospital, Bantayan District Hospital, and the Cebu Provincial Hospital in Boko City, as well as employees whose residences are situated in heavily earthquake-affected local government units, namely Katmon, Sugod, Borbon, Tabugon, Tabuelan, Boko City, San Remehio, Medellin, AdBantayan, Bantayan, Madre dejos, and Santa Fe." With that, Mister Chair, I would like to move for the approval of our calendar business as amended.
There is a motion to approve the calendar of business as amended?
Second.
It is seconded? Are there any objections? The Chair hears none, then the motion is carried. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, after review of the items in our calendar of business by our respective offices, may I now make an omnibus motion in relation to items drawn on numeral six, A to C of our calendar of business for the referral to the various committees subject to further suggestions and manifestations of the members of this august body. To be referred to the Committee on Women, Family, and Minors, item number one. To be referred to the Committee on Planning and Development, item number two. To be referred to the Committee on Differently Able Persons, item number three. To the Committee on... Sorry. To the Committee on Budget and Appropriations, items number four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen. To the Committee on Ways and Means, item number eight. To the Committee on Arts and Culture, item number thirteen. To the Committee on Accreditation, item number sixteen. And to the Committee on Laws and Review and Ordinances, item number thirty-nine. To be noted, Mister Chair, are items number seventeen, to be deferred, are items number forty-five and forty-eight, to be withdrawn, are items number forty, forty-three, forty-six, and forty-seven. I so move, Mister Chair.
Second. Second.
So there's a motion to approve the floor actions of the day?
Second.
It is a second? Are there any manifestations? Questions? Or objections? If there's none, then the motion is carried. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, may I make another omnibus motion in relation to the committee reports coming from the committees headed by the members of this august body? For the reports coming from the Committee on Public Health and Social Services, we have item number eighteen, A to C. From the Committee on Differently Able Persons, we have item number nineteen. From the Committee on Laws and Review and Ordinances, items number twenty, A to I. From the Committee on Accreditation, we have item number twenty-one, A to O. From the Committee on Ways and Means, we have item number twenty-two. From the Committee on Ways and Means, we have item number twenty-two. From the Committee on Arts and Culture, item number twenty-three, A and B. And from the Committee on Budget and Appropriation, we have items number twenty-four, A and B, and items number twenty-five, A to C. I so move for the approval of these committee reports, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve the committee reports, as stated. Yes, uh, do you hear a second?
Second.
It has been seconded. Discussions, manifestations, Board Member Mike Villamore?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. In view of the absence of the Honorable Board Member Celestino Martinez III, and as member of the said committee, I would like to co-sponsor the following committee reports under items number twenty-four, A and B, and items number twenty-five, A, B, and C. I so move, Mister Chair.
There is a motion for co-sponsorship? Or a manifestation, rather? In relation to the committee reports filed under the Committee on Budget and Appropriations? Any other manifestations? Board Member Lagun, Mister Chair?
May I request the Honorable Board Member Nelson Mondigo, the Chairperson of Committee on Laws and Review? If I could co-sponsor item number twenty, uh, letter H?
So there is a manifestation for co-sponsorship? Member Mondigo?
I acknowledge, Mister Chair.
Mister Chair? Mister Chair?
For item number letter H, twenty-one H?
Mister Chair, I, um, maybe we
Yes, uh, floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I don't think this can be co-authored because this is a committee report from the Committee on Laws and Reviews. So this report was signed by the entire committee.
Are you a member of the committee, Board Member Lagun?
Mister Chair, I made a mistake. May I defer my, uh,
So there's a withdrawal, the intent?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. I would like to manifest, Your Honor, to withdraw my earlier manifestation regarding co-sponsorship.
Okay, manifestation well noted. Any other manifestations? No more manifestations? And objections? The motion to approve the committee reports is hereby granted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, up next are proposed resolutions from the members of this august body up for discussion. First up, for items number twenty-six to twenty-eight, may we recognize Honorable Stanley Escaminero?
The gentleman from the Second District of the Province of Cebu, the Honorable Stanley Escaminero is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Respectfully, on behalf of the committee, this representation moved to approve for the resolutions stated under item number twenty-six. Proposed resolution authorizing the creation of a separate bank account for the outpatient HIV slash AIDS Treatment or OHAT Package Program, the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation or Philhealth, for the provincial government of Cebu. And for item number twenty-seven, for the proposed resolution, authorizing the governor to execute and sign for in behalf of the province of Cebu, the MOA with DOH, Central Visayas Center for Health Development, pursuant to RA 7719, otherwise known as National Blood Services Act of 1994. And lastly, under item number twenty-eight, proposed resolution authorizing the governor to execute and sign the deed of donation for in behalf of the province of Cebu with Sheridan Marketing Incorporated for the acceptance of World Fund units for official use of the district hospitals in the province of Cebu. I so move for all these resolutions, Mister Chair.
So there's a, um, motion, omnibus motion, to approve items number twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight in the calendar of business? Do you hear a second?
Second.
It is seconded? Are there any objections? The chair hears none, then the motion is carried. Floor leader.
Mister Chair, for items number twenty-nine and thirty, may we recognize the gentleman from the Third District of Cebu, Lawrence A. Lagun?
The Honorable Lawrence Lagun is hereby recognized. Mister Chair?
So I would like to move to approve a proposed resolution, respectfully requesting the public to refrain from posting unverified information regarding earthquakes and other calamities on social media, to avoid spreading the unnecessary panic and trauma among the general public. I also move for the approval, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number twenty-nine in the calendar of business, as authored by Board Member Lagun. Do you hear a second?
Second.
It is seconded? Are there any objections? The chair hears none, then the motion is carried. Board Member Lagun?
For item number thirty, a proposed resolution expressing heartfelt gratitude to the Honorable Senator Paulo Mendigno Osnolas Bam Aguirre, Aguirre, I mean, Aquino IV, for his generous assistance to the victims of the Northern Cebu earthquake. Again, I so move for the approval of this proposed resolution, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number thirty in the calendar of business, as authored by Board Member Lagun. Do you hear a second?
Second. Secondary in mass, uh.
There is a proposal to approve en masse the said resolution? There are no objections, so the motion is carried. Floor leader.
Mister Chair, for items number thirty-one to thirty-three, may we recognize Honorable Nelson J. Mondigo?
Gentleman from the Fourth District, Honorable Nelson Mondigo is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Item number thirty-one in the calendar of business, subject for approval by this august body, is a proposed resolution expressing profound sympathy and solidarity with the victims of the earthquake in the Fourth District and other municipalities in the northern part of the province of Cebu. I so move for approval.
There is a motion to approve item number thirty-one in the calendar of business, as authored by Board Member Mondigo. Do you hear a second?
Second.
There is a second?
Seconded in
Any objections? Proposal to approve en masse?
Yes.
Then the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Board Member Mondigo?
Likewise, Mister Chair, item number thirty-two in the calendar of business, subject for approval by this august body, is the proposed resolution expressing profound gratitude to the Sibuano people, the local government units, national government agencies, non-government organizations, and the private sector for their selfless service, generosity, and irregulable support to the victims of the recent earthquake that struck the northern part of the province of Cebu. I so move for approval, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number thirty-two in the calendar of business?
Second.
Do you hear a second? Seconded?
Um, but Mister Chair?
It is seconded en masse. No objections, then the motion is carried.
I still have one item, Mister Chairman. Item number thirty-three, subject for approval by this august body, is a proposed resolution requesting the National Engineers' Office, the Department of Public Works and Highways, and the Water District in the northern Cebu to prioritize structural inspection and immediate repair of provincial roads, bridges, school buildings, and water supply system in the northern part of the province of Cebu affected by the recent earthquake. I so move for approval, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number thirty-three in the calendar of business? It's seconded? Any objections? They're being none, then the motion is carried. Floor leader.
Mister Chair, up next, for items number thirty-four to thirty-seven, may we recognize Honorable Lawrence A. Lagun?
The gentleman from the Sixth District of the Province of Cebu, Honorable Lawrence Lagun is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I would like to move to approve a resolution thanking all the Sibuano volunteers for their rapid and collective response in the recent 6.9 magnitude tremor that struck the northern city and municipalities of the province of Cebu. I so move, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve the resolution of item number thirty-four. Do you hear a second? It is seconded?
In mass, Mister Chair.
Proposed to be approved en masse? Objections, then the motion is carried. Board Member Lagun?
Thank you, Mister Chair. For item thirty-five, a resolution in the law enforcement agencies and the Department of Social Welfare and Development, DSWG VII, to intensify their efforts in abating and prohibiting sheer carriages when intentionally entered by public utility vehicles. I so move, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number thirty-five? Do you hear a second? It's been seconded? Any objections? The chair hears none, then the motion is carried. Board Member Lagun?
Thank you, Mister Chair. For item number thirty-six, a resolution respectfully requesting the Department of Social Welfare and Development, VII, the Provincial Social Welfare and Development of Office and the City and Municipal Social Welfare Offices, in the heavily hit areas affected by the 6.9 magnitude earthquake, to intensify their efforts, combat psycho-social intervention and relief to the victims of the said disaster. I so move, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number thirty-six in the calendar of business? Any seconded? Any objections? They're being none, then the motion is carried. Board Member Lagun, do you still have a?
Yes, um, this will be the last, Mister Chair. For item number thirty-seven, I would move to approve vehemently condemning business process outsourcing, otherwise as BPO companies, who allegedly prevent their call center agents or employees from moving their workplace in the middle of a 6.9 magnitude earthquake without considering nervous can safety of the same. I so move, Mister Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number thirty-seven? Do you hear a second? It is seconded? Any objections? They're being none, then the motion is carried. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Chair. For items number forty-one and forty-two, may we recognize the gentleman from the Sixth District, Honorable Alfred Francis M. Oano.
The honorable gentleman from the Sixth District of the Province of Cebu, Board Member Alfie Oano?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I move for the approval of the proposed resolution under item number forty-one in the calendar of business. For the item number forty-one, the proposed resolution is an amendment of previous proposed resolution which was referred to the Committee on Laws on September eighth 2025. Mister Chair, I would like to make an amendment as recommended by the Committee on Laws on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. The amendment to read as follows. One, on the title, "From a resolution expressing full support to the realization of the new Cebu International Container Port, or NCICP, project situated in Barangay Tayud, Consolación, Cebu." Two, "A resolution expressing in full support to the realization of the new Cebu International Container Port, project situated in Barangay Tayud, Consolación, Cebu, being a flagship project of the Office of the President and pursuant to the earlier resolution number of the Thirteen Sanggunean Pandaluigan adopted on December seventh, twenty fifteen, subject to compliance with all applicable laws, environmental safeguards, and prior exultation required for the protection of the interests of the province of Cebu and its constituent." Number two, "Under as under paragraph ten, from to ensure that NCICP is completed within the projected timeframe, the body encourages compliance with all the necessary requirements from concerned agencies, especially ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero five, otherwise known as a prior exultation mechanism in local government governance within the territorial region of the province of Cebu." This body assures the project proponent that it shall extend full assistance in securing indispensable permit and durances, including those from the Cebu Provincial Reclamation Authority. Two, "To ensure that NCICP is completed within the projected timeframe, this body encourages compliance with all the necessary requirements from concerned agencies, especially ordinance number two zero two three dash zero five, otherwise known as the prior exultation mechanism in local government within the territorial region of the province of Cebu, and further express in support to the timely processing of indispensable permit and durances in accordance with law and applicable regulation, including those from the Cebu Provincial Reclamation Authority. I so move, Mister Chair."
But Number Oano, this is a new resolution already, which is based on a committee report that was submitted by the Committee on Laws and Ordinances. Hence, the need to approve it as it is, without any amendment?
Uh, I start great, Mister Chair. I move for with amendments, Mister Chair. As, as recommended by the Committee of Laws.
Yes, so we are approving the resolution as stated.
As stated, Mister Chair.
Okay. So there is a motion to approve the resolution, uh, endorsed by Honorable Oano? It is seconded?
Second.
Second.
No objections? Then the motion is carried. Board Member Oano?
Uh, in regards to the item number forty-two, Mister Chair? I would just like to move that the change, it is same with the the resolution filed by my colleague, Honorable Villamore, considering his as chairman of the higher education. Just like that he would want to sponsor it, and I'll just be, meet as a co-author, Chair.
So there is a potential that the resolution filed by Board Member Oano be merged with the solution earlier approved?
Not yet.
Not yet approved, to be filed by Board Member Villamore?
Under other matters, Mister Chair?
Under other matters. So, Board Member Villamore, you are going to have a harmonized resolution?
Yes, Mister Chair, I accept.
Okay.
I agree.
But for manifestation?
Uh, Mister Chair?
Yes, so manifestation will taken? We now move for? So, Mister Chairman? So Board Member Oano will be withdrawing as for item number forty-two and will be a co-sponsor of Board Member Villamore's resolution?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Yes, I think that was the essence of the manifestation earlier by Board Member Oano. It will be harmonized with the resolution that will be filed by same, uh, subject matter. Okay, Mister Chair, um, moving on to item number uh, for item number forty-nine, may we recognize Honorable Lauren Esco. SKF, President. Honorable Esco is hereby recognized?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I would like to move for the approval of item number forty-nine, which is a proposed resolution commending all Sanggunean Kapataan officials in the province of Cebu for their exemplary service, volunteerism, and donations during the 6.9 magnitude earthquake that struck northern Cebu. So following that event and the next following days, equality arose from the youth, and most especially the Sanggunean Kapataan, and that is their spirit of volunteerism and service. So this humble representation, we'd like to dedicate this resolution to their effort and kindness for acting beyond and over the mandate, simply to help those in need. for acting beyond and over the mandate, simply to help those in need. Once again, I move for the approval of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
For Esco, they provided water, other supplies, no, and some of which were be, were distributed by the members of the legislative body.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Highly commendable action by our Sangguniang Kapataan officials. So there is a resolution from Board Member Esco?
Mr. Chair, can we have this as en masse?
Yes.
So there is a proposal to adopt it en masse? Objections, then the resolution is approved? Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Up next is items number fifty and fifty-five. Let me start with item number fifty. It is a resolution authored by yours truly and Honorable Stanley Escaminero, entitled, uh, authorizing Honorable Pamela Esperecuatro, Cebu Provincial Governor, to give financial assistance for and on behalf of the province of Cebu, the amount of five million pesos to the provincial government of Dabo Oriental to aid in their current disaster response and rehabilitation efforts in light of the recent seven point five magnitude earthquake that struck the province. This has been certified urgent by the Office of the Governor, Mr. Chair, and uh, I hope we can pass this en masse, uh, to show our solidarity with our brothers in Dabo Oriental. Thank you.
Yes, who will transmit the assistance, uh?
Uh, I believe it will be the, um, the Executive Department, Mr. Chair.
So there is a resolution to approve the financial assistance in the amount of five million pesos from the provincial government, Cebu Provincial Government, to Dabo Oriental to aid in their current disaster response rehabilitation efforts in the light of the seven point five magnitude earthquake that struck the province, a certified urgent? If there is a proposal to adopt it en masse?
En masse. En masse, Mr. Chair.
Resolution is hereby approved and be transmitted as soon as possible to the Executive Department. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for item number fifty-five, once again authored by yours truly and Board Member Stanley Escaminero, it is a resolution, again authorizing our governor, Pamela Esperecuatro, to provide cash assistance and aid amounting to ten thousand pesos each to all employees of the Cebu Provincial Government working in these four province-owned hospitals, namely the Huan Dosado Memorial Hospital in Sugod, the Daan Bantayan District Hospital, the Bantayan District Hospital, and the Cebu Provincial Hospital in Boca City, as well as employees whose residences are situated in heavily earthquake-affected local government units, which are Katmon, Sugod, Borbon, Tabugon, Tabuela, and Boca City, San Remeno, Medellín, Daan Bantayan, Bantayan, Madaderos, and Santa Fe. This resolution aims to provide, um, assistance to our employees who have been working very hard, uh, in making sure that lives and livelihoods in the north are, um, are, are saved and, uh, the list of these employees, Mr. Chair, will be provided by our HR office to be approved by the Office of the Governor. So again, um, I hope we pass this en masse. Thank you.
There is a motion to approve item number fifty-five in the calendar business?
Second.
No, so a second, it has been seconded?
Mr. Chair.
Discussions, yes, Board Member Calderon.
Okay, Mr. Chair, with the permission of the authors, uh, this presentation would like to be a co-author of the measure.
To say, uh, intent to co-author the resolution?
Very much okay.
What does say, Floor Leader?
Very much okay, Mr. Chair.
Very much okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Board Member Caminero.
Can we also second this en masse?
There is a proposal to adopt this en masse? May we supac? Board Member Kerry?
I da gamas upo, may supac?
Motion is carried?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For items number fifty-one and fifty-two, may we recognize Honorable Michael Joseph P. Villamor?
Gentlemen from the fifth district, the Honorable Michael Joseph Villamor is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of the, um, proposed resolution under item number fifty-one. But before that, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a manifestation to make as co-authors the sixth district board members, the Honorable Alfred Francis Oano and Honorable Daysan Lawrence Lagun. Item number five fifty-one is a proposed resolution congratulating and commending Dandin Lago Bernabe, who hails from the Barangay Nanga, from Barangay Nanga of the Municipality of Consulación, and is a graduate of the University of San Jose Recolatos, USJR, who garnered a ninety percent rating in the recently concluded September twenty twenty-five psychometrician licensure examination and for being Cebu's first ever top one in the said exam. I so move for its approval, Mr. Chair.
Is there an amendment to the resolution, Board Member Villamor?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
It will remain as stated?
Um, as amended, to make us co-authors, the sixth district board.
But the content of the resolution will just be the same?
Same.
Okay, so this is just the, uh, co-authors will be added?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
In the resolution? So there is a motion to approve item number fifty-one? In the calendar business?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Board Member Rosgoney.
Can we move it en masse?
There is a proposal to adopt it en masse? No objections, then the motion is carried. Board Member Villamor?
Mr. Chair, item number fifty-two is a proposed resolution commending the University of San Jose Recolatos for its exemplary contribution to academic excellence in the field of psychology, as evidenced by the outstanding performance of this graduate who topped the recently concluded September twenty twenty-five psychometrician licensure examination and recognizing the institution's role in bringing our honor to the province of Cebu. I so move for its approval, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion to approve item number fifty-two in the calendar business? Second?
Second.
It is seconded? Are there any objections? Seconded, the motion is carried.
Mr. Chair, for item number fifty-three, may we recognize Honorable Nilo Viceno?
The gentleman from the Lone District of Mandawe, the Honorable Nilo Seno is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Before I move to uh, adopt and approve said resolution, Mr. Chair, may I, may I move to amend the title of said uh, resolution, Mr. Chair? Um, to as follows, a resolution to extend our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to Mayor Frederick Xiao of Iligan City for his selfless donation of one million pesos for each earthquake-stricken LGU city, San Remeno, Tabuela, Daan Bantayan, Tabugon, and Borbon during this difficult time. Um, so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion to amend the title of this resu- resolution? Any objections? It is seconded?
Seconded en masse. Seconded en masse, Mr. Chair.
But this is adopted en masse? Amendment of the resolution? Amendment to the resolution?
There is also another amendment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Board Member Seno.
The same amendment goes for the dispositive portion of said resolution, Mr. Chair.
So there is further amendments on the dispositive portion of the said resolution? So both amendments are hereby recognized and approved? Then we go to the main motion?
Yes, I hereby move, hereby move to adopt and approve the resolution under item number fifty-three, Mr. Chair, um, which is a resolution um, to extend our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to Mayor Frederick Xiao of Iligan City for his selfless donation of one million pesos for each earthquake-stricken LGU of city, San Remeno, Tabuela, Daan Bantayan, Tabugon, and Borbon during this difficult time. So move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion by Board Member Seno to approve item number fifty-three in the calendar business? As amended, there was an earlier manifestation to approve this en masse? We came here personally to hand over the donation?
Sorry, Mr. Chair?
We came here personally to hand over.
Yes, I even posted it on my Facebook, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so the, uh, resolution is, uh, adopted en masse and hereby approved?
And then, Mr. Chair, for item number fifty-four, may we recognize Honorable Malcolm A. Sanchez of the Lone District of Mandawe?
The Honorable Malcolm Sanchez of the Lone District of Mandawe is hereby approve, is hereby recognized?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before us today is a resolution expressing the profound gratitude of the province of Cebu to the Office of the Special Assistant to the President, Honorable Anton- Antonio F. Legdemea Junior for the donation of tents, water, and canned goods to the victims of the recent six point nine magnitude earthquake in the province of Cebu. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion to approve item number fifty-four in the calendar business? Do we second?
Can this be approved en masse?
There is a manifestation to adopt it en masse? The items that were handed over by, uh, Special Assistant to the President, Anton Legdemea, were delivered personally by the members of the legislative body, no, to the different, uh, LGU-stricken areas. Yes, Board Member Calderon?
I think, uh, we, we had, uh, itemized the, uh, the, the the donations, but I think there is, uh, no mention of rice. I think he gave also rice?
Yes, he did.
And water purifier? Since we are mentioning all these things, we might as well mention the rice and water purifier?
Board Member Sanchez, I believe there are omissions as to the, uh, items that were given, but anyhow, we can approve this resolution, but incorporate that were given. Okay, so so to adopt this en masse? Submitted? No objections, then the resolution is approved?
There. Up next, Mr. Chair, for discussion is item number thirty-eight. It is an ordinance, uh, for third and final reading authored. Uh, it is a proposed ordinance instituting a drug-free workplace in the provincial government of Cebu and authorizing the conduct of random drug test, drug testing for public officers and personnel thereof and for other purposes. May we recognize its author, Honorable Alfred Francis M. Oano?
Is hereby recognized? This is for third reading, no? Okay, Board Member Oano, proceed.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we make up a promotion, I would like to inform the body the final draft entitled instituting a drug-free workplace in the provincial government of Cebu and authorizing the conduct of random drug testing for public officers and personnel and for other purposes was approved with amendment last October sixth, twenty thirty-five of a second reading. Mr. Chair, with that, I move to dispense the reading of the entire text of this proposed ordinance and at the same time move for the approval for third and final reading, Mr. Chair.
Your request for dispensing the, uh, reading of the entirety of the resolution is granted. You proceed with the motion, Board Member Oano?
Um, again, Chair, I would move for the approval for third and finally, I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's in motion? To approve? As authored by Board Member Oano?
Second.
For third and final? There is a second? Any objections? Objections there on the ordinance? Instituting a drug-free workplace in the provincial government of Cebu and authorizing the conduct of random drug testing for public officers and personnel thereof and for other purposes is hereby approved for third and final reading.
Mr. Chair, our last item for discussion for the day, item number forty-four. It is a proposed ordinance for second reading. A proposed ordinance enacting the Cebu Province Digital Services Act of two thousand twenty-five, providing for a legal framework on digitalization of regulatory and revenue-related transactions, online payment systems, and data privacy protocols and for other purposes. May we recognize the author, Honorable Malcolm A. Sanchez?
Honorable Malcolm Sanchez is hereby recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is for discussion, right? Um, as for second reading, Board Member Sanchez, do you wish to take the, uh, rostrum?
I'll just stay here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
For, again, uh, this digitalization ordinance we have today is more than just a technical reform. It is a framework that redefines how government serves its people in the digital age. Next measure lays down the legal and operational foundation for our province's transition to e-governance, which is already long overdue. Through mining processes, ensuring data security and aligning our local systems with national digitalization laws. By passing this ordinance, we affirm our commitment transparent, efficient, and responsive to the needs of our constituents. It is high time that the province of Cebu leads by example in embracing innovation for public service. As author of the Cebu Province Digital Services Act of two thousand twenty-five, I submit this ordinance as a forward-looking governance reform that cements Cebu's leadership in provincial digital transformation. It also professionalizes the province's vision as one of the thrust of our government as a responsive, transparent, and data-secure government, ensuring that technology and digitalization serves as a bridge, not the government service, Mr. Chairman. With that said, I move for the approval on second reading. Last ordinance.
But before we move?
Yeah.
Uh, move for, to dispense with the reading of the entirety of your resolution? Since this is for second reading?
Since this is intended for second reading, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the opinion of my colleagues if whether or not I will dispense with the reading of the entire text of the said ordinance, considering that this is now for second reading for discussions, amendments, and revisions.
Wish to, that the text? Is granted?
So with that, Mr. Chairman, allow me to read the entire text?
Not anymore.
It's of the title.
The motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The motion.
So before us today is the ordinance enacting the Cebu Province Digital Services Act of two thousand twenty-five, providing for a legal framework on digitalization of regulatory and revenue-related transactions, online payment systems, and data privacy protocols and for other purposes. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion from Board Member Sanchez to approve the proposed ordinance? Second? Any second? It is seconded? Discussions? Questions? Manifestations, yes? Board Member Kerry Shimura?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Um, Board Member Malcolm Sanchez, uh, may I ask if how does this digitalization ensure compliance with the data privacy laws in its digital platforms?
Sanchez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to answer that, um, question, Board Member Shimura, all digital platforms under this ordinance, number one, shall comply with the Republic Act number one oh one seven three, or the or the Data Privacy Act of twenty twelve. It's implementing rules and regulations and I R R and other rules and regulations set by the National Privacy Commission or the N P C. And in addition, the governor shall appoint a data protection officer who shall be responsible for ensuring compliance with privacy standards. So also, each department or offices shall designate a compliance officer for privacy, who shall be recommended by the head of the department or office to the governor to ensure compliance with privacy standards and to perform the day-to-day functions of a D P O within the respective units under the supervision and guidance of the designated D P O.
Shimura, you still have more questions?
Um, do you have the, uh, the list of the service provider of this digitalization, Board Member Malcolm?
Yeah, yes.
Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the ordinance have stated, this ordinance is passed for us to create a legal framework on digitalization. The, the, the data providers and all will follow. What I am intending this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, from the contents of the ordinance, it is high time that we have to pass this ordinance because we do not have any ordinance moving forward for the province to welcome the digitalization practices.
You still have more questions, Board Member Shimura?
Board Member.
Okay, so now we have to, uh, Board Member Calderon?
Yes, this is, uh, this is in relation, Mr. Chair, of the queries of, uh, Board Member Keri Shimura. Uh, you mentioned that there will be a compliance officer per office?
With that, um, Board Member, uh, yes.
So what you mean by office? Each, uh, office, department, division, including our own offices here in, uh, in the legislative?
Um, as far as the ordinance is concerned, it will only refer to regulatory and revenue-related transactions offices. So our office will not be included in this particular matter, Mr. Chairman, because the ordinance only stated revenue-related transactions that refers to the city treasurer, the, uh, assessor, and offices that would issue licenses, certifications, assessments, and other permits, which are revenue-generating services.
So, uh, these departments will have new additional personnel for this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, is it included in your proposed ordinance, the new, uh, items for these, uh, uh, departments to, to have a compliance officers?
With that, Calderon, we have the establishment of the Technical Working Committee in the Digital Services Act. So it is going, it is for the Office of the Governor to appoint, uh, said personnel on this different offices.
Yes, but we need, uh, with the ordinance, we need to have a, an approved item for this, uh, in the different departments.
As of the moment, uh, Board Member Calderon, we have a, uh, we have the data protection officer, which is already being hired by the Office of the Governor.
Yeah, yes, but you, you mentioned that, uh, each department will have a compliance officer.
With that, yes.
So in your old, proposed ordinance, is there an item for this, uh, new, uh, personnel who will mandate compliance, uh, as, as compliance officer?
We have, we have the provincial I C T office, the Board Member Calderon.
So they will be the one to deploy a personnel to the different departments?
Yes.
But does the department of I C T, is that the I C T?
Yeah.
Have enough personnel for them to, uh, to be deployed to the different departments?
Which is why we are, uh, passing this ordinance, Board Member Calderon, in order for us to have a legal framework moving forward on the Digitalization Act.
Yes, uh, under your ordinance, how many employees are we going to create for that?
So here, let me check. We have the protection officer, we have the compliance officer for privacy, and, uh, we have the technical I C T office.
So in total, how many, Mr. Chair, how many, uh, employees are we going to create under this ordinance?
More or less five.
Would this be, Mr. Chair, would this be enough to deploy to the other department that needs the compliance officer?
For a first-to-first implementation, I would say yes.
So you, so that, it would mean that it is not, they are, they will not be, uh, they will not be appointed in each department, they will just have to coordinate with that I C T department?
Yes.
So, uh, one more thing, Mr. Chair, is there a ci- civil service, uh, eligibility of, uh, what a compliance officer is? Do they have the, uh, what qualifications for this position?
For the data protection officer, it requires a special, um, special requirement, Board Member, considering that they have to be issued a certification coming from the forgot the organization in which before they are hired as data protection officer, they must get the certification. The civil service qualification is not that important.
Yes, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, but do we have the people who are qualified for this position? Are there people who are qualified for this position under the civil service, uh, eligibility?
Yes, we already have, um, some employees at the I C T office number that are qualified.
That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Member Calderon. Any other questions, Board Member Rosgony?
Um, Honorable Malcolm, since this is an online payment system, this is a financial security, which is critical for revenue-related transactions. So the transaction security, what is the security standard, like example, P C I D S S compliance, if applicable? Will the own systems adhere to, and what protections is offered to users against fraudulent transaction?
So, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have said earlier that all digital platforms under this ordinance shall comply with the Republic Act number one oh one seven-three or the Data Privacy Act of twenty twelve.
So, um, I will continue, uh, Mr. Chair. So the proof of payment, how will the digital assets of, uh, groups of transaction integrity be guaranteed to ensure citizens are not erroneously penalized for nonpayments? If this.
So still, still, we still with the data privacy and security protocols, this ordinance will be working under in compliance with the Republic Act number one oh one seven-three?
You still have questions?
I am satisfied, um, Mr. Chair. So on the one or three.
Go on.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, this ordinance is punitive in character under section fifteen penalties and sanctions. May I ask the proponent if he was able to provide an opportunity for stakeholders to express their opinions, uh, concerns regarding this proposed policy? Because when you say penalties and sanctions, this requires public hearing of those who will be affected by the ordinance, Mr. Chair. That, my question, Mr. Chair.
Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so under section fifteen penalties and sanction, the penalties and sanctions is reliant upon the sanctions under Republic Act number seventy-one sixty and Republic Act number one one zero three-two. So there is a penal provisions, sanctions, and penalties, which is already being imposed under Republic Act number seventy-one sixty and Republic Act number one one zero three-two in which, which has been incorporated here in section fifteen penalties and sanctions.
My concern, Mr. Chair, is the requirement of public hearing so that those who will be affected, the stakeholders, will be notified.
Uh.
Yes, Board Member Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, in my opinion, I don't think, uh, the public hearing is really required for the penalties and sanctions, because the penalties and sanctions are already laid over in Republic Act number seventy-one sixty and Republic Act number one one zero three-two.
I reserve my other questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. This, uh, in our caucus this morning, Mr. Chair, partly manifested my, uh, opinion on this matter. Having gone through the entirety of the ordinance, Mr. Chair, surprised why there are many questions from our colleagues as to security, as to, um, the platforms will be, uh, having access to our, um, important, uh, financial informations and the like, because the Mr. Chair, is a bit generic. That's why, here I mentioned, Mr. Chair, I intimated, uh, of course, while not understanding that I appreciate the effort of the proponent, the Honorable, uh, Sanchez, however, comprehensive. First, um, digitalization, especially considering that digitalization is something that is very, very technical. Guidelines to bring down will include the organization itself, so that our unit will be very specific, other than. So, so, so let's first say it. The original ordinance will have its, where it is within the provincial systems and departments, we should have our own, um, types of penalties. Um, Mr. Chair, I was trying to go through this. Trying to synthesize the, the diverse questions from the Honorable Shimura, from the Honorable Calderon, from the Honorable Reluia, and the Honorable, uh, Rosgony. I perfectly understand why these questions are very varied, because the ordinance itself is still very generic. Was really hoping that more detailed and comprehensive study, review, situation could have been, uh, carried out first with the committee of the author, so that a more detailed rundown of the guidelines that have been presented. So, Mr. Chair, if you go through the ordinance, the core variable is actually mentioned under section twelve, establishment of a technical working committee of digital services or the T double G dash D S. I'm sure, Mr. Chair, that this really determines and makes or breaks the entirety of this ordinance. However, this committee, which is a T double G, can vote for executive order having to so. That T double G assume the responsibilities and duties laid down here by the good author and so that it can come up with cohesive, more detailed guideline and implementation, department per department, and as the province as a whole, in fact, to even integrate digitalization the provincial sangunyang palalawigan, since it is a provincial, provincial government in scope. So, my point, Mr. Chair, is this, the intention of author can very well be achieved by, uh, for now, by a mere E O, executive order from the Office of the Executive, substituting what was mentioned here, and then the information is collated, integrated, and come up with a encompassing ordinance with the details, and by then, just mentioning seven fifty, seventy-one sixty, and the Republic Acts, because when we have the specific guidelines, we can impose specific penalties or violations. For instance, the data protection officer, Mr. Chair, can be created and appointed, it's just a matter of appointment by the executive department designating a D P O, there's no need for an ordinance, actually. But each department, in order to safeguard the data, is correct, there has to be a data protection officer. For instance, uh, P H O has a D P O and other departments, and this can be achieved. As of now, my point, Mr. Chair, is this a very, very, uh, vital, uh, area and an ordinance, indeed, I agree, would be needed, but maybe to its, its seriousness, Mr. Chair, maybe a more thorough, a more comprehensive, a more detailed groundwork is in order, so that when we approve the ordinance, we have enough concrete and detailed guidelines of which really to approve. And then, by then, are the positions that this ordinance create, what are the salary grades of these positions? Because in an ordinance, Mr. Chair, when we create an office for a department this manner, is the personnel that were, and the positions we're supposed to create has really to be designated with qualification standards and the corresponding salary grades. That's my, that's my, uh, contribution, Mr. Chair, and I hope, uh, it contributes to the faith of this proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair. contribution, Mr. Chair, and I hope, uh, it contributes to the fate of this proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair.
Sanchez?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I also would like to thank board member Caminero for the inputs, but I would like the council to know again, oh, before this ordinance took shape, I had a series of meetings, number one, with the governor itself, her representatives, particularly with the chairman of the TWG supporting the provincial ICT council. With that, Mr. Chairman, we conducted committee meetings and committee hearings. And in one of our committee hearings and meetings, Mr. Chairman, it was attended, I sent an invitation to the members of the Committee on Information and Communications Technology. The meeting was held at the executive, um, department hall attended by no less other than our provincial administrator, attorney Joseph Durano, Felix Durano, Mr. Paulo Oi, Miss Marie Jeanette Saluba. And Miss Marie Jeanette Saluba, yes, Mary Jeanette Saluba, Miss Janet Guarin, Miss Michelle Langido, Attorney Roy Salubre, Christopher Barrecuatro, Attorney Ken Anthony Perez, Eric Cabalquinto, and Miss Debbie Amendo, I could, I could not read the family name. So all of the inputs, suggestions, and comments during that committee hearing, Mr. Chairman, were all taken. And then we all took notes of their suggestions and it was even recommended by the governor herself. And I may quote, she said, "Dugay na ni na tunghihuwak ang digitalization." So timing, na this is her trust in the province. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will welcome all comments, all the suggestions of my colleague to harmonize this particular kind of ordinance. But then again, if you look at and read very the ordinance, it started providing for a legal framework on digitalization of the province of Cebu. So we have to create this particular kind of ordinance so that we can start because there is no ordinance from the very start heading forward for the digitalization transformation of the province of Cebu, which is why upon the approval of this ordinance, we can move forward and have legal basis. All questions pertaining to who will be the provider, all in all, it's not even here because this is just the framework of the province of Cebu towards digitalization. And for me, given everything, I would like to know what is in the ordinance that something that you do not agree? The provincial government being efficient, being transparent, or supporting a national law about making easy business for our constituents to transact with provincial government? That's all what is important in this ordinance. All those providers will be in the next phase. The first phase, we have to lay down the legal framework of the Digitalization Act of the province, which is long overdue.
Mr. Chair?
Board member Pipito?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand the good intention of, uh, the sponsor, Mr. Chair. But since there seems to be a lot of concerns and apprehensions, may I ask if the author, the honorable board member Malcom Sanchez from the Longestikomandawi to part the discussion of this resolution for later date and invite the DICT and the ILG as resource speakers for a more comprehensive discussion of this, Mr. Chair? If the author is amenable. I believe this is ongoing advocacy of the ICT and the ILG, Mr. Chair. Since this is a highly technical topic, Mr. Chair, this should also give all, uh, all of us here in this august body an opportunity to ask our concerns to the respective government agencies responsible. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Is that a motion, board member Pipito?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion by board member Pipito to move the discussion of this ordinance on a later date and invite DICT and ILG, if the, uh, for the, that's a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Any?
I, I second, Mr. Chair.
There's a second? Any discussions to that motion?
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, board member Sanchez.
I think, um, now I, I, I can now recall, Mr. Chair, that I think Tuledo City is a pilot project of the ICT, uh, am I correct?
I am, Mr. Chair.
For the digitalization, Mr. Chair, of the ICT and the ILG, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I think, uh, I think ILG is are the pilot project of this the ICT and, uh, one is, uh, one is Tuledo City.
Okay.
Yeah, one of it is Tuledo City, that's why, uh, there's a lot of concerns and discussions of this matter. Uh, I would, uh, suggest that this will be, uh, part in the for more discussions and inviting, uh, the ICT and the ILG of this, uh, resolution authored by honorable Malcom Sanchez, Mr. Chair, and, uh, sorry, order, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion to, uh, defer discussions on this proposed ordinance? Continue discussions for more ordinance on a later date?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
To invite, uh, representatives from the ICT and, uh, the ILG. And it's been seconded and, uh, board member Reluia?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to request the proponent to reconsider the suggestions of our colleagues. Especially, I understand the point of, uh, board member Caminero as regards the penalties and sanctions. We should not be borrowing what is given by RA seventy-one sixty and one ten thirty-two. It should be separate and distinct and specific with this ordinance. So dapat specified siya.
So the motion has been seconded, uh, would like to hear from board member Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in addition, I would like to make it a clarification that the words borrowed, I did not borrow it. It's actually the basis for imposing the penalties and sanctions of this ordinance. So, Mr. Chairman, I subscribe and I respect all the humble opinions of my colleagues here, the Sangunian, to harmonize this ordinance. I am just trying my best moving forward that this is really good for the province of Cebu and collective hands and many more heads making this ordinance meaningful for the province of Cebu. I would subscribe to their opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Could the chair request for a two-minute process?
Session is here by resume. So on the turn, it is a motion by the board member Pipito actions of the proposed ordinance authored by honorable Sanchez to a later invite center teams or communications Department of Information and Communications and Technology and Department of Interior and Local Government so, and center team from the executive department on the set of the discussions to be set by the author, the honorable Sanchez. If it was set by the author himself or it may be in the session that he may decide that he wish to propose the same proposed ordinance again.
Mr. Chair? That's a motion on the floor and it, and already seconded? Yes, board member Caminero?
When you're, you're incorporating the possible, uh, resource, uh, persons and expert, uh, personalities, uh, honorable Pipito has mentioned that, uh, Tuledo City has been doing these digital platforms, maybe we can also invite a resource person from the GGO of the city of Tuledo, Mr. Chair?
Board member Pipito? He's certainly expert, yeah, no?
Mr. Chair, I just, uh, I, I, I know the, uh, the proposal, the, uh, proposal of honorable Stanley. Yeah, I can ask with, uh, with, uh, in charge there of our, our, uh, office, no? Uh, our LGU.
Okay. Board member Sanchez will, uh, make the necessary introductions and the meeting again will be set by the author as to when, uh, the, uh, contingency of this discussion will be done. So the motion has been seconded, any other manifestations, objections?
Mr. Chairman?
Discussions, yes, board member Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, before we approve it, Mr. Chairman, I would like also to include in the invitation, Mr. Chairman, um, Mandawi City, Mr. Chairman, uh, which is why I'm so passionate for passing this particular kind of ordinance because Mandawi City has been the number one city in the entire province of Cebu who has been awarded multiple awards in, in business particularly with its easy doing business in the form of digitalizations. I would like to inform my Mandawi, um, ICT officer also, Mr. Chairman.
So why pagdapigdapig?
Why pagdapigdapig, Mr. Chair?
Board member Pipito, Tuledo City is the number one city to him, no?
Mr. Chair? Won't it be proper also to, to check the tax, provincial tax code kasi meron siyang penalties and sanctions?
Yes.
We are covered by the provincial tax code eh?
Is not on the manifestation? Any other manifestations, discussions, objections? They're doing that, then the motion is approved to set the discussion for the said ordinance, proposed ordinance in a later time. Motion is here by a group. Floor leader?
Mr. Chair, if there are no more announcements, may I now move for the adjournment of today's session?
There's a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Huh? There's an objection? Where they now the motion is adjourned? I mean, session is adjourned.
So why object na?
Advance of the board, please, wise look.